Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Jared, please take your own.
Mr. Bekowski, here.
I do not.
Mr. Bada.
That's big.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Oh, my God.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio.
Just quick reference.
Mr. Rose.
Harrison.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
As of right now, we have 12 members present.
We'll begin with proclamation slash certificates. Our only proclamation this evening, we read into the record, 13740-25.
A proclamation recognizing Wilkins Township Commissioner Sylvia Martinelli for her dedicated years of public service sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulas.
Thank you. One off. Public comment on any agenda items?
We have three. First up is Benjamin Chisar.
Greetings and salutations. Happy Giving Tuesday. I hope everyone supports our local charities. I want to begin by reminding everyone that political violence is unbecoming in a civil society. Along with the 10-year Charter Review Commission, which is meeting now and on whose wrecks I hope you'll act, the budget is the most important task you will complete. The budget gives the public an opportunity to see what expenditures you all prioritize. I rise tonight in opposition to the budget as proposed. I believe Pennsylvania is the most overtaxed state in our union. In my opinion, this entire process could be more transparent with more and better notice, earlier meetings to get the public input before decisions need to be made. Budget summaries should be published in all local newspapers, on the budget itself. First, we must reassess the value of all property in Allegheny County. Undervalued property equals higher millage rates. Then, we must cut the millage rate. Moving on, we must then scrub the budget by department. Even a minor cut of 5% on a $3 billion budget saves over $150 million. With $38 trillion in national debt, we should plan for a day when federal and Commonwealth money dries up. We should compartmentalize major spending, so public safety, transit, CCAC, all separate things under your supervision. We should consolidate all police operations and the House of Death, the jail, under the elected sheriff. We should consider a public safety tax and a transit tax. The dedicated millage should correspond with a cut in the general millage. We should reform the black hole that is PRT. All transit in this county should be free. All stops should be revenue-producing, whether with advertisement or solar roofs. We must eliminate all bond issuance authority that is not overseen directly by the 15 of you or a vote of the public. All of them. All these independent authorities, get rid of them. While you're at it, get rid of the controller position. You have a treasurer and a DA and a sheriff. You don't need a controller. Public servants do not necessarily need to have private sector compensation packages. Healthcare contributions and pensions are unnecessary. In my view, the best strategy for regional economic growth is to cut taxes, raise the minimum wage, clean the air, make PRT free, and build thousands of new affordable units. Separately, Mr. President. So many house fires in this community. Why do we have so many non-functioning fire hydrants? In honor of tomorrow's International Day of Persons with Disabilities, I want to encourage the county to do more on accessibility, particularly on recreation. Limited mobility should not equal limited opportunity for fun. Everybody get your flu shot. If you're over 45, get a colonoscopy. Congratulations to Paul Skeens, our champion riverhounds, and the Claredon Bears. Thank you kindly. May God bless Allegheny County and all who call her home.
Abby Ray-Lacome. And please let the record reflect that Mr. Klein is now frozen.
Good evening, councilors. It is great to be here, and I am actually here just to say, I think you guys are doing a great job. My name is Abby Ray-Lacome. I am the Executive Director of Rent Help Pittsburgh. Last year, you heard from me and many members of my colleagues and staff to talk about the importance of housing stability for Allegheny County renters. And you guys showed up, and it has made a huge difference in the lives of hundreds, hundreds, hundreds of households. My understanding is that the $900,000 amendment that was introduced, thank you, Jesus, has received really great support from all of you, and I can't tell you how impactful this is for our neighbors. I'm going to cry because I work all the time to support these people who live next door to all of us. They are scattered across the entire county. That $1.9 million reflects 713 households that your vote ensures they will stay housed. More than half of the people in those households are children. It has been amazing to get to interact with you all. It has been amazing to get to do this work with support of the county executive's office. My agency, Rent Help Pittsburgh, we started in 2020. We were meant to be a very temporary agency. We were just here to help people connect with rental assistance during COVID, and what became very clear is the 14,000 households that are evicted every year in Allegheny County need an agency that understands that the difference between staying in your house and losing your house is a family member going to the hospital, a child getting sick. And that is who my staff work with every single day. And these very, very small amounts of money in the grand scheme of things are what make a difference between a child graduating and not graduating, a family finding the new job that can take them to the next opportunity, and instead falling behind and ending up on the streets of our city. So, thank you guys so much for your investment last year and for your continued investment this year. I can't tell you and I can't embody for you how impactful this is for so many of our neighbors. So, huzzah. I think you guys are doing great. Thank you.
Next up is Madeline McGrady.
Hi. Looks like I made it just in time. So, I'm Maddie McGrady. I'm a resident of Highland Park, and I'm speaking today as a co-chair of the Housing Justice Table. We're a coalition of organizations advocating for policies that guarantee the right to housing for everyone, no matter their income level. And I'm also here to thank council for increasing the budget allocation for rental assistance and eviction prevention in the midst of the housing crisis. This is truly funding that is a lifeline for so many thousands of families in our county. And I have, you know, my comment written out, but I want to speak a little from the heart and just say, like, having worked as a social worker with youth aging out of foster care, immigrants and refugees, people who are just low-income, seniors, people with disabilities, unless you've worked, experienced eviction yourself, or worked with families that are going through this, I think it can be hard to imagine just how disruptive and devastating it is. I truly believe it's one of the worst experiences a person or a family can have, and it can upend, you know, not only your living situation, but your employment, your ability to connect with your social support, to send your kids to school, to connect with your faith community, to access food, medication, transportation. So much is tied up to keeping families in their communities and in their housing. So, I know the budget is tight, but I just want to thank you for seeing the need and for keeping the funding in place. We definitely need to be talking about increasing it, not cutting it. And I did want to share just some stats that I think can put some numbers to the number of families that have been helped. District 1, and this is not comprehensive, but just to give some examples. So, in District 1, over 1,139 families received support to be able to stay in their homes and their communities, with payments totaling over $5,879,000 in rental assistance. District 2, over 200 families with payments, over almost $1.5 million in payments to keep families housed. District 4, 2,167 families received rental assistance with payments totaling over $10 million, $10.5 million. District 6, over 1,800 families, almost $9 million in payments. District 7, 2,360 families, payments of over $12 million. And the city of Pittsburgh, over 11,000 families with payments totaling $55 million between, sorry, 2021 to 2024. And these are families who, you know, in the worst day of their lives, like, this funding was able to keep them in their homes and in their communities and prevent them from becoming unhoused or, you know, having to struggle to find a new place to live. So, again, just thank you.
Thank you. No more, right, Jared?
That's it.
Okay. No minutes tonight, no presentation of appointments, unfinished business. Councilman Rose, I believe you would like to say something at this point in time?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. I'm learning a lot.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes. As we just saw, I'm a very new member to this body, but I'm honored to be here, and I have been talking to other members, staff, the administration, and I feel prepared to vote on business tonight, as the public has elected me to do.
Thank you. At this point in time, Committee on Budget and Finance for the second reading, 1368-2-25.
That's an ordinance of the County of Allegheny. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania establishing the tax levy on all real property subject to taxation within the limits of Allegheny County for fiscal year 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Paul Messina.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Finance Committee met last week and firmly recommended this ordinance. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jared, please take a roll call vote.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, no zero. Bill passes.
13734-25.
An ordinance of the County of Allegheny. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending the existing fee schedule for various rates of fees established by county departments sponsored by the Chief Executive.
At this point in time, the Chief Executive has requested that the council consider an amendment to this bill. Mr. Paul Messina, would you be willing to make a motion to approve 1373425 so that we can begin discussion?
Yes, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call vote on this, Jared? Are we good?
No, that was merely to begin discussion.
Discussion?
Correct.
Okay. To all those in favor, signify by saying.
No, Mr. Chair.
48-hour rule would be next.
Okay.
So, that was just the introduction of the bill. So, now we need a motion to introduce the amendment. So, I'd make a motion to introduce amendment.
Or first, yeah, first we have to waive the 48-hour rule.
Are you motioning to do that?
Yes.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay. So, is there any discussion on waiving the 48-hour rule? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Now, would someone like to make a motion to adopt amendment in Marado 1 so that we can begin discussion on that amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. So, is there a motion to adopt? We had the amendment in the second. Any discussion of Amendment 1 in Marado 1? Amendment in Marado 1?
I think just for the public's awareness, we should probably say what the amendment actually does. So, I guess I can do that.
Yeah, want to do that?
Mr. President. So, this amendment by the administration essentially provides a slight increase in the fees that we had discussed at our last budget meeting, so that we're not pulling money out of the fund balance like we would be due to a few of the amendments that council introduced during our last budget meeting. So, I believe those amendments were, one, some of the increase that we just heard a few public commenters discuss for rental assistance program, and then I believe the other one was an increase in the position for the DA's office, or public defenders as well.
Any other discussion?
President Katina.
Go ahead.
Not really discussion, but just glancing quickly through these, quite a few of them seem to be significant, and I just wanted to not mislead anyone.
Is there any other discussion at this point in time?
Just that the new fees under the Boyce Park ski slopes have increased slightly, whereas a lot of those other ones had held, and so it's something that's just a little bit confusing to me when you look at all the other recreational amenities.
President Katina, if I may, I believe from our discussions with the Budget Office that a lot of these fees have not been increased in several years, some of them upwards of 20 years.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
One last one.
Go ahead.
Just in line with what our public commenter talked about in terms of, you know, budgetary disclosure and, in this case, I mean, this is literally the 11th hour, and I have concerns about doing anything at the 11th hour that involves this many changes.
Okay. And Councilman Fatoulas?
I've been on this council quite a bit, a long time now, and our park fees are not even close to breaking even. There was a time we spent as much as $30 million to operate our parks, and we would lose $25 million. We were only making between $5 and $7 million in revenues a year. So, no matter what kind of revenue or fees we do, we're so, we're really far behind, but we know that the 1% rates that sells tax does fund it, help fund it. But these fees start to come in line with probably where we should be, so I'm okay with what we're doing. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
President Katina, if I may, because District 2 does house most of North Park, which is a significant park in our system and is the gem, I believe. But I have looked at these fees, and I looked at the previous fees that we did actually vote on, and then I've looked at the adjustments. I do believe, and this is coming from me, that the administration has made a thorough attempt to bring these fees in line with where they need to be and for the specific services that they are for. I do not believe, this is not a tax, this is not something that is coming out of all of the public. This is a service fee for the use of our beautiful parks. And I have to say that I have spoken to District 2 members who are, also agree that the fees are low, and they were happy to pay lower fees, but they will also be happy to pay these fees because the parks are in wonderful condition. Just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Just one more comment to kind of contextualize all this, too. I think it's important to remember that if we aren't increasing these fees, what we're effectively doing is having the taxpayer subsidize our usage, you know, of these parks and these facilities. And as much as I very much enjoy South Park Golf Course being very affordable, I don't think it's appropriate that Allegheny County taxpayers should be subsidizing folks using those facilities, right? And so, by increasing these fees, we are, again, making sure, like Councilwoman Filiagi said, that people are paying an appropriate amount to utilize the facilities and that the taxpayers writ large are not footing the bill for that.
Anyone else this evening?
May I just clarify my comments? I do agree with increasing the fees. It's just that the proposed fees for the ski slopes increased twice, if you look at this, as opposed to the skate rentals and some of the other ones that have increased as well. So, I just wanted to make certain that folks knew that I would have preferred it to be at the new increase, the previous increase fee and not the new one that was proposed today.
Anyone else? Okay, Jared, take a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to adopt amendment in Marado 1, Mr. Bekowski.
No.
Mr. Bada.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 13, knows one. The amendment is adopted.
Now, is there any discussion on the bill as amended? Hearing none. So, let's do a roll call vote on the motion to approve bill number 13734-25.
On the motion to approve the bill, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, knows zero. The bill passes as amended. A resolution of the County of Allegheny. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania adopting an operating budget pursuant to Article 4, Section 2, and Article 7, Section 4 of the Home Rule Charter by setting forth appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting the public business of Allegheny County and for meeting debt charges for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Thank you. I believe we have an amendment to this bill as well. Mr. Paul Messina, would you be willing to make a motion to approve 1368325 so that we can begin discussion?
Yes, I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and approved. We'll now have amendment admitt, tongue-tied. We need to vote, and then we're going to have amendment in Marado 1. So, all those in favor signify by saying.
Well, actually, can I make a motion to waive the 48-hour rule? The 48-hour rule, motion has to come first.
So.
Yep. Can I make a motion to waive the 48-hour rule?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Now, would someone like to make a motion to approve, or to approve 1368325?
In Marado 1.
On, in Marado 1.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries.
Sir.
Everyone want to take a look at it? Any discussion on this?
Just my earlier comment that I really don't like last-minute stuff.
Okay. Any other discussion? So, are we good? No one? Okay. So, we'll make the motion, the motion for a roll call vote.
On the motion to adopt amendment in Marado 1, Mr. Bekowski.
No.
Thank you. Mr. Bada.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 13, knows one. Amendment in Marado 1 is adopted.
So, is there any discussion on the bill now as amended? Hearing none. Jared, please take a roll call vote on motion to approve bill number 13683-25.
On the motion to approve, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, knows zero. The bill passes as amended.
13684-25.
A resolution of the County of Allegheny. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania adopting a capital budget pursuant to Article 4, Section 2, and Article 7, Section 4 of the Home Rule Charter by setting forth appropriations to pay the expenses for capital expenditures during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Paul Messina.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Finance Committee met last week and firmly recommended this resolution. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jared, please take a roll call vote.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, knows zero. The bill passes.
13685-25.
A resolution of the County of Allegheny. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania adopting the Grants Budget, Special Accounts Budget, and Agency Fund Budget by setting forth appropriations to pay set expenses during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Paul Messina.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Finance Committee met last week and firmly recommended this resolution as amended. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jared, would you please take a roll call vote?
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, knows zero. The bill passes.
Are there any liaison reports this evening? And I will preface this again, and I know you get tired of me saying this, but liaison reports are for committees that you're specifically assigned to. So, does anyone have a committee report or a liaison report for a committee they're specifically assigned to?
Question of clarification, Mr. Chair.
Sir?
Oh, after, after Council Macy, I believe he's got one.
Pardon me. I chair Public Works, darling. It's only been, what, how many years? Oh, anyways. I just want to say that, as you could see from today in news reports, that when snow comes, there's plowing, there's a lot of work that goes on out there by our Public Works, salt's being spread. Please keep your distance. Please watch out for other cars. Slow down. And just because the road looks wet, it may be icy. So, be careful. Please do what you can to drive purposely and thoughtfully and save a life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I actually do have a, well, I do want a clarification. Is the Southwestern PA Commission appropriate for liaison report?
Sure.
So, currently, the Southwestern PA Commission, which I serve on, is going through its Allegheny County Vision Zero Plan, which is basically, actually surprisingly ties into Councilman Macy's liaison report as well. They're going to attempt to eliminate, or at least reduce, the amount of traffic, accidents, and fatalities that we experience throughout Allegheny County. So, they just identified 10 corridors throughout the county that they're really focused on that are some of our most dangerous traffic corridors. So, if any of you have input from your constituents on any of those, or if you want to talk to me after the meeting to provide input on how we can potentially improve any of those areas, the SPC and myself are both happy to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.